Twenty fifteen, City Council meeting. Would you please stand for this case? Follow my plate.
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Please watch over our community. Allow this council to make decisions that are in the best interest of our community.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Green, can I have a little call for?
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Shig?
Here.
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 All present? Next we'll move into the approval of the agenda. Any motion to support, bring this to the floor.
Ooh, support.
I'd like to add, under, after council comments, a closed session. It will be for the Henry Mullen Dor lawsuit. We all have in front of you a definition of why we would be going in there. I will read that when we get to that. Anything else? Hearing now, I'd ask for a vote on the approval of the agenda as amended.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Shig?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Eric Guderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Approval of agenda as amended, pass five oh. Next we'll move into public comment. Anybody wishing to comment on any public, any agenda item, please step to the podium, name and address to the record, please.
Shelley Gladine, ten twenty one, Southern Street. Um, I have a copy of the special event application. Um, basically I was wanting to let you know, I don't, I don't think it's going to be any different other than putting in paper what we've always done with the city for Labor Day. So I just asked for a little leniency in the first application if I mess up a little, like forget something that, because um, just maybe try to get it out in the application correctly, so. But I, I don't think, I don't see anything even than other, you know, others who just verbally had the discussions with, aren't my best, so. I don't see any major inherent would be different, so. I just thank you, I, I think it's a good idea just to make sure, you know, all events are covered in the city's letters, so. I don't see any major issues with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is good evening, but it's a pleasant atmosphere. I too had an opportunity to review the special events policy and application. Um, I think as Mrs. Gladine pointed out, that it's a good idea to have everybody all on the same page with all the different events that come into town, that they're all treated fairly and equally with respect to processes you want to put them through in order to get their event approved, and so I applaud you guys in that effort to get that going. Um, the one thing that I would ask you to reconsider or to consider amending is the application itself, number twelve. And I didn't print the whole thing with me, um, but it refers to the fact that it cites part of our city code with noise control and reminds the applicant that they would have to, the entire event would have to remain appropriate within the noise control ordinance before, during, after the entire event. And I guess I would just say that the way that that is written, it suggests that no variances would ever be allowed. Um, and I know that, I don't even, I think it's been Labor Day and maybe Gus Macker. I've been here several times where there's been standard ones that we have, that you guys have approved variances for these kinds of events, um, for the noise. And, um, assuming that that's the kind of thing you will keep approving, maybe there's a way to just build that into that question, maybe asking, reminding them that they would have to abide by that but for if they were granted that variance. Um, and maybe even asking the next question, twelve A, would be, do you anticipate on needing to request a variance from the noise ordinance? Uh, maybe even making that part of that package. Now I realize a variance wouldn't be done by, um, couldn't legally be granted by this committee that you're forming here, but it could still be part of that package and that one question forwarded on to the correct, um, uh, the correct venue for that. So, um, I guess that's the only thing I'd like to ask or address on that one. Um, as far as the other, the only other two things on new business, um, B and C, the trainings, um, again, I want to applaud you guys for, um, putting forth the effort to make sure that you are remaining educated on issues that are important. Obviously, all the chairs and boards that the city of Golden has, or quite a few boards, all those chairs should be knowledgeable in all the meetings act as well as yourselves, uh, because it's essential that those laws are followed in all meetings, um, that the city of Golden has. And as regarding with FOIA, um, obviously that's something that the city manager, city clerk, um, as well as yourselves, we need to remain informed of, because those are the people that take the first go at it, the first round of things, but as things are appealed, they obviously can go to you, uh, if not straight to circuit court. So, I know that time after time, things have been brought to your guys' attention with FOIA, that one, if not two or three, or even all five of you have said, you know what, we're not attorneys, we don't know what the rule is on this particular thing, it was denied, um, on these grounds, and we don't know, um, we're inclined to think maybe no, that's not the right way to do it, but we're just not sure. Uh, I would ask you to consider at least, um, making FOIA training something that is not just for the one year that's in this resolution, but it's something that you can continually stay updated on. First of all, even if you guys were the ones sitting in those chairs for the next twenty years, um, you guys would still need to know things as they were changed and updated, and there's always some new thing that's asked in a FOIA request that you might not have encountered before. But also, it's an elected position, and the next time your seat is up, or your seat is up, or your seat is up, you might decide to not run, or you might lose that election, and the next person who's coming to sit in that chair would need to know the things that you're being trained on, uh, in two thousand and fifteen under this resolution. So I would ask you to consider, um, first of all, the length of time, uh, that the OMA and FOIA trainings would occur, that it would expand beyond just one year. Um, I think it's a great idea, that just needs to go longer. And also to consider making it a requirement. You had asked, especially with conjunction with the ZDA, um, I don't remember exactly after the talk, I don't remember who it was, but several of you were very adamant that training would need to be taken by the individuals who are applying for those ZDA positions, that they needed to be qualified to do their job. Well, I believe that all of you need to be qualified to do your job, as the same with any other chair, uh, or any chairs of any of the subboards that we have in Golden. Uh, and in order to be qualified, they need to know the applicable laws, and these are the two most basic. Well, the OMA would not, would be the only one that applies to the other boards. But I would ask that you consider, um, making this a requirement, just as you were talking about, um, trainings for the ZDA, um, not just a simple suggestion. And with that, I would say, well, thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Captain. Any other public comment on the agenda items? Hearing now, we'll close public comment. Next we'll move into the good neighbor award. Jerry, hand that right over to you.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, I'll just give you a brief history, um, what I know here, and I'll give an opportunity to, for you guys to thank anybody else that we need to thank, because I know there's a lot of people involved. Um, with the idea from Belleaine Varsity Girls and Boys Basketball Coaches Brad Wilson and Mike Riddell, and parent Rick Beckett, along with the help of many others, Belleaine High School hosted fill the gym night on Friday, January third of two thousand and fifteen. The goal was to showcase the gym and set an attendance record, and thank the entire community for their support in helping build a wonderful facility to have. This was truly a community event. Past basketball teams were honored, youth basketball games were played, and alumni band, alumni band members were invited as well. When you play high school sports, you not only represent your school, but you represent the entire community. I believe the relationship between community and high school sports impacts the growth and development of a small town. I can only imagine the community pride and impact, the success of Belleaine's championship football teams had on this community in the mid nineties. I would like to thank Rick Beckett for all his efforts to make this happen, this event happen. I would also like to thank Belleaine Schools for their continued community relation efforts. On behalf of the City Council and the City of Belleaine, I would like to present this award, the neighbor award, to Rick Beckett, um, Mike Riddell, Brad Wilson, and Joe Welker.
Thank you very much.
I guess you guys biggest smiles going on in the house, so. Look good, gentlemen, thank you.
He's going first, sorry.
Back up a little.
All right. Makes it sound perfect.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Real quickly, my name's Joel Welker, I'm the athletic director, and I just want to reiterate what we tried to do that night is to thank the community, um, because we believe that we have a very special environment, not only for athletics, because I think we have beautiful facilities. Uh, it's fun to watch other people come in for the first time to our gyms and to our other places, and they're like, one of the girls said, is this a college? That's how beautiful they are. And we want to say thank you every time we can, and also, but not only our athletic facility, but also for the academic things and upgrades we've had at the high school, as well at the elementary and middle school, so we always want to say thank you. We have four major sponsors, community sponsors, who are always great to us, and that's Lepix, Stalins, uh, Gus Macker, and Belleaine Tank, and we want to thank them very much. They helped sponsor the white shirts, we had a whiteout, everybody that wore a white shirt got in for free, the idea behind it was that, and we had all these shirts printed off. My friend Rick did a ton of work with, with that, and, and it was awesome to see all the people there. And, you know, it's great, you can go to community showcase, and we encourage you to do that, but it's also really exciting to have you come and watch, and that night the young men and young ladies played, it was fun to have that environment, and they appreciated it as well, because we did do a good job of filling the gym that night, so. Just wanted to say thank you, especially to those people. You want to add anything?
Oh, not a whole lot, other than, um, I didn't grow up in Belleaine, but I grew up in a small community, not a whole lot different than Belleaine, and like, uh, Mr. Welker said, the facilities we got are unbelievable, and sports has a way of just bringing the community together, and hopefully this is something that maybe can keep going to some extent every year, where we can keep building more of a crowd and just fill that thing to the hilt. Because I'm hoping what it can do is not only bring the community together, but maybe put a little excitement in the kids that are younger coming up and seeing what it's like to play at Belleaine, whether it's football, basketball, or anything, it's kind of their, their avenue of doing that, so. Hopefully it's something that kind of sparked a little bit of excitement in some kids that maybe might not want to go up for basketball, might want to now. I mean, we've got two young coaches in Brad and Michael who bring a lot of enthusiasm, and it'd just be something to, nice to get it going. So hopefully we can keep the community going, we can talk to more, uh, businesses in the area to get them involved with it, so when we do have this again, it's even more exciting than it was last time, so.
Coach, you have anything to add?
Well, just on behalf of the girls varsity basketball program, we couldn't have been any more proud of the event. Uh, these guys put in a lot of work with that, and, um, the girls worked really hard, were nervous, we walked in the gym, and there were more people there than we had, um, maybe all the other games combined, uh, but it was exciting, and it was just, it was just special to be a part of it as a coach, and, uh, the girls are, were just, um, so ecstatic that, that we had such support from the community, and we hope to continue that, so thank you so much.
Before we leave, I'm going to brag on Coach Wilson and the girls, they won our district title, uh, this year, and so that's the first since two thousand and ten, and they had an awesome, they won, to my knowledge, the second most games in school history with eighteen, so they had a great year as well, so.
Thanks, Coach.
Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. Next we'll move into the consent agenda. We have five, five items on the consent agenda, any motion to support, bring this to the floor.
Ooh.
Any separation? Hearing now, a call for the vote.
Mr. Shig?
Yes.
Mr. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Guderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
The consent agenda passed by a vote. Next we'll move into council aides on reports. Mike?
Uh, I have nothing, and the housing commission is not having a meeting this week, it's going to be the ninth of April, in March, or April.
Here.
No, you see a meeting yet. Um, last week, Lynn Mason met with, for the Labor Day Committee, met with every businesses last week, and, uh, they had a nice discussion on, uh, on some ideas for Labor Day, so in the future and in the present, so. Um, they also have a pork chop drive at the American Legion Saturday from five p.m. to eight p.m., um, as part of their fundraiser, so they, they ask everybody to show up if they can and, um, have pork chops.
Gladine, thank you. Tom?
No planning commission meeting yet, uh, we have one, I think, next Tuesday, but I don't think right now anything is coming up as being approval.
We have not had a recreation board meeting since our last meeting, the next meeting will be in the beginning of April, so.
Uh, DDA met Thursday, passed the last council meeting, and they are still talking about, um, the captured area, about, um, not changing the boundaries of the downtown district, uh, area itself, but restructuring it, so it's more, uh, maybe not in the negative capture. And we're still working on that, if that's more input on that coming in, so. Other than that, I have nothing else, no unfinished business. Next we'll move into the business, which is item A, special event policy. I'll have to turn that over.
Dale, just turn it over.
Sale? Okay. Keep passing it around.
This is a policy that we have tossed back and forth for many years, uh, in an attempt to standardize, uh, our events as they came to the city of Belleaine and were presented to council, and, uh, as Shelley Gladine said, it's a good thing to have happen, and it's, it's good for us as staff, because this way we have basically a checklist that's coming from the people that are going to be putting on an event. We will be able to now take a look at everything they're asking for or wanting to do within the city, and it sets it all in writing, and everybody will be treated fairly, each event will have the same application to go through, and then when the committee gets together and reviews the event, we can go back to them and have them clarify components of their event to make sure that we're covered as a city, that they're covered as, uh, the group putting on the event, and that everything goes very smoothly. Um, years past, we would get late applications, we'd be scurrying to try and make things work. This way, it sets it in place that if somebody's going to have an event, they know that they have to have this application into City Hall, you know, specify a period of time so that we can review it, make the changes that are necessary, get it back to them, so that they're prepared, uh, to be able to make those changes and meet all the requirements of the city. And it's kind of unique, uh, it's a unique document, because it really does, uh, make the person or organization that's putting on the event accountable, and allows us to know exactly where things are going to be placed, and what streets are going to be used, what parking lots are going to be used, and what areas they will not be able to use, and we'll be able to define that as a city. And I'm excited, as well as the department heads, uh, to see this being in place this year, and hopefully, uh, being that this is the first year, that we're able to work through any difficulties that may come with the application process, and make not only the city happy, but the visitors to the city happy, and the people that are putting on the program happy also, so that, uh, there are no glitches, and everybody gets exactly what they're expecting to get, so, very important for all of us.
Can I get a motion to support, bring this to the floor? So, support. Okay, let me just question. Tom?
Although I don't, uh, think we need to amend anything, uh, I would hope that by the end of the, next year, we would be reviewing this to make sure there, any line changes need to be made. I'd see what, uh, Kevin Henry had talked about in school, although there's a couple other of them that also kind of cross over as to requiring exertions, uh, street closures has to be approved through the police department, through the city. So there's some other, some other of the fourteen questions there that, uh, could require other action from departments or from the city. So I just hope, you know, after about a year, we review this and see if we need to formally address those particular questions. I think overall, it's a good, good policy, and I think it'll clear up questions for anybody that wants to sponsor an event.
Thank you, Captain Dennis. Um, not to reiterate what everything, uh, Mr. Jones said, but I do believe it's a good policy to have, uh, it's a good document to get things moving forward, um, with Catherine's comment, um, I agree, uh, to make sure that those students who went out there still understand that they're right to the merits, so.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, I think it's important that the current application has them in sixty days prior to the event, if there is a problem, gives them a chance to get it worked out, and stuff, it'd like to be nice to see something go without glitch.
Here.
I think everything's straightforward, I, I think I would like to, of course, for every event, there's always going to be, uh, you know, a money-warming quarterback, I should say, and talk about things that maybe went wrong or didn't go wrong. I would hope maybe that, uh, um, the committee can meet with, if there are any concerns or something, meet with individual after the event and discover, um, any concerns that, uh, they had, and, uh, discuss those, like Tom said, maybe to go back and you may have to tweak a few things after each event or after the event, so, um, maybe meet with an individual or a group after, after the event, just to go over things, and make sure, just discuss what went wrong, or what went right, and that sort of thing. That's all I have.
Thank you. I think, um, one thing we need to consider too, is this is the first sign off for this, and we know we're going to have some hiccups in it, uh, the city will work, you know, to get, um, the bugs worked out of this. I agree that what we really need is almost like the event, I guess, interview after the event, as Jerry was saying, sit down with the people, you know, if, obviously you guys are going to be sitting down as a group, DPW, Fire Department, Police Department, City Manager, and you'll be sitting down, you know, with the applicant to make sure what all this is about, um, but I think it is very important, especially this first year, to figure out, you know, what, what needs to be tweaked and what doesn't. As far as noise variances, we, we do allow those through the city council, and this, I think this really is asking some basic questions that then the board themselves will be able to address accordingly to. I am glad that this has, has moved forward, and as I said, this is the first year, we'll work through this, and, um, but I do believe that we're, uh, we started down this path with this, I think it does answer a lot of questions, like who's responsible for what, and who will be taking care of what, and that way there's no confusion where, what he said, she said, or how were the circumstances, so. Um, one concern I do have is I do know that, um, there are no fees applied to this, I think I, we can look into that in the future, depending on if, if it does become cumbersome for burden, and, um, Bruce, Bruce and I have talked about that, so, other than that, I have no other comments. So, I would ask for a motion to accept this. Okay, a vote then, for a motion to accept this. We brought this to the floor, we made a motion, and we need to accept the special event policy. Support. Call for the vote.
Mr. Shig?
Yes.
Mr. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Guderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Special event policy passed by a vote, next move into the, thank you, Dale, by the way. Next we move into, uh, item B, which is FOIA training.
Resolution number two thousand and fifteen zero three two seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Belleaine, Michigan, encouraging FOIA training for Belleaine City Council members, city manager, and city clerk.
Thank you. Bruce?
My intention to bring both this one and the next one to you relates, relates to the fact that this is Sunshine Week, uh, which is a national celebration of transparency, if you will, in government. Uh, you, you may know that FOIA was established in nineteen sixty-six at the federal level, and sent its way to, uh, the state level, uh, and has had mixed blessings, so you may have noticed the last week, in USA Today, there was a full-page article about what's happening with this across the country, and it's pretty scary. Uh, so it seemed to me that this is the time, this is our business, uh, transparency in what we do, it should be the normal part of who we are, and, uh, so I have recommended, uh, both of these, the training sessions, so that we are up to date. Uh, the state of Michigan has passed a number of amendments to the FOIA legislation, which will be in effect in July, and, uh, we need to know what they are, and how they impact our community, and same with the open meeting setting, so that's the background behind why I bring these to you, uh, this week. I think it's a good thing for us to do, it's, uh, it's our business, and we should do it well.
Thank you. Motion to support, bring this to the floor. So, support. Dennis?
Um, I have nothing on this issue, it's really pretty straightforward, um, I think it's a good thing for our community, and, uh, that's all.
Thank you.
Mike? Here?
Uh, you know, with the, you know, FOIA law coming into effect, I think we need the, they have the new laws, um, I know I have been to the newly elected officials' training that, uh, when I was first elected, but, uh, things are changing fastly, so, you know, I think we owe it to ourselves and the community to, uh, go through this training.
Thank you. Thank you. Tom?
I think it's good that we're moving in this direction, um, as Ms. Henry had said earlier, um, I don't know that we can require the city council to take formal FOIA training, but I think as I said here, to encourage the formal FOIA training, but I think, as I said here, to encourage the City Council members to go to the FOIA training. I think we could require that the City Manager or the City Clerk have some kind of formal FOIA training each year and, and continue to encourage the City Council members to participate. I don't want to add anything to what we're doing here right now, but I think we should look at that sometime this year, by the end of the year and adopt another resolution of a policy to that effect.
Okay. I've attended two of these FOIA trainings since I've been on City Council and it's very interesting that it's still changing as we go. So, I agree with Tom. I think one of the things is that we will see though, that with the laws changing and everything, Tom, that they will be taking them obviously to, you know, protect the city, you know, and the residents, so.
I'm not sure if I'm saying it the way I did, that I don't know we need to adopt anything particular right here, but keep that in mind and maybe toward the end of the year, after things have settled down with the FOIA laws, you know, address that issue.
Okay. Next, I'll ask for a vote then.
Mr. Lallow?
Yes.
Mr. Gunnerson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Scheich?
Yes.
FOIA training, item B, under new business, passed by a vote. Next move into the Michigan Open Meeting Act training.
Resolution number two thousand fifteen zero three two eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Valdland, Michigan, encouraging Michigan Open Meetings Act training for Valdland City Council members, City Manager, Department Heads and Chairs of all official city boards and commissions.
Thank you, Bruce. Anything you want to add?
I'm out of words.
Okay. Motion to support, bring this to court.
So.
Support. Mike?
It's, another thing, it's just a good idea, just like FOIA training, because I don't have a problem with it whatsoever. It's not going to hurt anyone, that's for sure.
Here.
No, I have the same thoughts as, as a FOIA trainer.
Tom?
She's a bit, you have the same thoughts I had on the last one. I would like to see us amend our different committees, our planning commission, BZA, DDA, that would require the department head or the chair of those committees would be part of their formal appointment to do these, but that can, again, that can be addressed at a later time. But I think we, we should be able to require the chairs of those committees go to that and there again, the City Manager and the City Clerk would be required to review those or go to that every year and encourage the City Council to also do that. There again, we can address this sometime later this year, but I think it needs to be done and however we have to address the descriptions of those committees.
Okay. Dennis?
I have no comment.
I would like to see this moving forward, obviously, but one thing I'd like to see too is to allow, if, once we get through this and the appropriate people want to do this, I'd like to, since this is more of an open meeting act as far as everything, I'd like to really see this to where maybe we could get a cost on what this would cost in the future to actually even bring all the boards and all, you know, people that are on those boards in on this and not just, you know, selected, you know, the chair or co-chair or whatever. So, that would be my thing that we can add to your list too, Tom, as far as, you know, in the future. Other than that, I would call for a vote, please.
Mr. Gunnerson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Scheich?
Yes.
Mr. Lallow?
Yes.
Item C, under new business, passed by a vote. Next move into public comment. Anybody wishing to comment, please step before him, name an address for the record, please.
Shelly, hi, twenty-one Pleasant Street. I would like to commend you guys on looking for these educations because, you know, education in these areas, it doesn't make you reliant on what someone else's, someone else's knowledge. If you have that knowledge yourself, you don't have to worry about it. So, I commend you on that and I've never, ever, you know, it's always a good idea to have your own education and it's something no one can ever take from you. So, this, you know, this is allowing any of us on these commissions and boards to take those trainings, I, I just think it's a good idea, so I commend you guys on taking those steps to make sure that we're all educated in what they are dealing with on a monthly, daily basis, so, thank you. And also, I know it's not, it's an agenda item, but, you know, I just think it's a good step forward on the event planning issue and just on the fee end of it, you know, possibly to think in the process if it's a five oh one C three charity item or, you know, an event that's going for profit, to look at that in the fee schedule also. Okay? Thank you.
Any other citizens in town? Seeing none, so we'll close in public comment. Bruce? Do you have anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
Council comments, I think we're up to you, Jerry.
I think we got a lot accomplished today and I wish you a really, Happy St. Patrick's Day. Just enjoy the beautiful weather, thank you for coming out.
Tom?
A couple things. This was an article on WoodTV, East Grand Rapids was holding a meeting about going for village for sidewalks and street repair. I'll just pass the copies around to the members. I thought we were trying to move ahead and with the actions we've taken at the City Council. Apparently Joe Firestein is not here tonight. He's talked to at least one councilman, he's talked to me a couple times about resigning. I know he's talked to some people in the community. The area that he says I should resign for was because I abstained from voting on the issue of the night of the election. Part of what he talked about, except as otherwise provided in the charter, a councilman shall not vote on any question in which he shall have direct financial interest other than the citizen of the community, but all other questions. And she had, in this place, some of this. Anyway, it says that a council member should vote yes or no on any given vote. Now, I don't know if Mr. Firestein knew that the night of that election or not, if he did, then I feel he should have reminded us or the mayor that I had to vote one way or the other, either yes or no, and that wasn't done. It is for financial interest. The financial gain was, I was concerned that if we proceeded with the then-current, the then-City Manager, we were going to have more lawsuits against us and I felt it was inappropriate to extend the contract. Part of the city charter in two point seven, as any person per officer of the city found guilty by court shall be removed from office. As far as I know, no criminal charges has been filed because of that. And the city councils, for the code of ordinances, four point seven, removed from office. Removed by a council, elected or appointed officers or members of board, commissions may be made for any of the following reasons. I believe if you want to get technical, I did abstain from voting. One of the reasons is personal or financial interest. My financial interest was in the city. So, I guess it's up to you gentlemen, if you're going to ask me to resign, but I don't see where I did anything wrong and if Mr. Firestein knew that the night of the election, then he should have brought it up. The City Manager, then-City Manager should have known the rules of voting for the City Council and she should have brought it up. So, like I said, he's been going around town, he's talked to at least one City Council member, maybe two, and he's talked, I seen talking to people in here at a council about it. So, if you need to address that issue, then the council needs to address that issue. If not, I would hope it would be dropped. That's all.
Thank you, Tom. Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Brown, I brought it up a few different times. I want to see going forward in our city that we are providing some of our local contractors opportunities to do work with our city. I know there's a handful that have done work in the past and for whatever reason, they're not getting those opportunities and it's my opinion that those people should be doing our work in our community. They're putting back in our community, live in our community, the kids go to our schools. So, going forward, I'd like to see more of that and I know you met with one contractor regarding that. Jerry, I wanted to thank you for the award you got. I know Mr. Walker is still here and I know Mr. Walker since I was about this tall, he has had a huge impact on my life and kind of helps other kids in this community, he's very well observing about that award. Mr. Jones, I support you a hundred percent.
Thank you.
That's all, yeah. Thank you, Dennis.
I agree that what's happened up at the schools and stuff is fabulous, I mean, it's just, it's been a long, long time and building schools don't always get the praise they should get, like they get a bad rap at some young children's stuff and it just isn't the truth. So, I'm glad to see this happen also, it's a good suggestion, I'm glad to come about. And I support Tom on this too because of the way things were, have been handled and stuff, you know. I guess that's all I got to say on that. Anyway, it's a nice St. Patrick's Day, glad to see everybody still up great. Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. I'm done.
Thank you. Jerry? I didn't know if you were kind of from like yet something? No. Okay. All right. Couple things. The, they have a public hearing on the no further action on Electrolux's property. I've been in contact with the DEQ and was expecting an answer back from them and had not gotten anything. Finally, again, I moved up the blue chain today and I was able to talk to David O'Donnell and they are going to issue the no further action. However, because of the public hearing, it was brought to their attention that people were not happy with the two-year draws on the test wells over there and that we did not, as a collective group there that night, felt that that was long enough. So, they're going to extend that for five years with another public hearing and they will be monitoring the wells staggered year, or staggered yearly, so when Electrolux does their wells, six months later, DEQ will do them and they will also throw in, he's hoping, at least four additional draws on that property, like on skip. So, they are going to, he promised me that next week, they would have a Facebook page up and running so that the residents can keep track of what's going on over there and Bruce has gotten ahold of the new person who the City of Valdland will be contacting with about Electrolux property and hopefully they'll be, you know, come to terms with that, will be able to get the fence down, you turn it over with permission from the DEQ, which Electrolux wants that to be suitable for park use before they'll take the fence down and then we'll work on the details from there. So, other than that, thank you everybody for coming tonight. Kind of different weather today than what it was yesterday. Joel, I'm probably in a short sleeve on, but on the other hand too, I guess, you know, you're a big guy.
Bushful thinking. Got to get those spring sports out there.
There you go. And Tom, if, if you feel any better, I mean, I would ask that you would contact the attorney and.
I don't have a problem with what's.
Okay, but I'm just saying that, that would be my suggestion, you know. And, you know, I understand your decision and your frustration, so, thank you.
I'd just like to commend you in working with the DEQ and trying to get some answers for those citizens in town.
Yes.
One other thing I did have, we met in Lansing yesterday on the, with MDOT and DNR and both in the same room for the Rails to Trails to finish up the granting process for Valdland to Greenville, Valdland to Low to Saranac and we were actually going to have a special meeting today at City Hall for Greenville, Kent County, the Friends Group and we had DNR and MDOT are going to be there, however, we were able to actually get them all in the same room in Lansing. So, we went down yesterday and we are moving forward even faster than what we thought after our meeting yesterday. So, I believe that from what we were told, that this project is very doable next year providing that everything gets pushed through the process with the grant process and everything at MDOT and DNR, so. Other than that, I have nothing else. Next item is the closed session pursuant to PA one sixty-seven fifteen point two six six eight, section eight eight, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure of state and federal statute. This has to do with the Henry Moore lawsuit. I would ask for a motion to go into recess in the closed session for the purpose of discussing this pending litigation.
So.
Support. Motion to support. Call for a vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Scheich?
Yes.
Mr. Lallow?
Yes.
Mr. Gunnerson?
Yes.
Close session.